We're just waiting for upstairs. Alrighty, we are good. Barbara? You're good? Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. We apologize for the delay. Our CRA meeting did run a little long. If everybody can stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Terry Knox, why don't you come up front here for a second for me? Why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight if you don't mind?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bless you. Thank you, sir.
Chief Coleman? Wait, Chief. Oh, wait, 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 wait. We have a guest speaker. Chief White. Come on, Chief.
Chief, you ought to know better than to come in here and you're not getting away with that one.
Now, wait a second. We always do an implication. Who wants Chief White to do it? There we go. Lars, I love you and I know you hate me. It's okay.
It's all right, Dale. I parked in your parking place this evening. I'm sure there'll be a little white tick on there when I get out.
Sorry, Chief.
Thank you all. If you would like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we pray for those in Louisiana and neighboring states that felt the impact of Hurricane Barry and his continued effects. We pray for their recovery efforts. We pray for all those first responders and all those city workers, power utilities and all the other utility providers, and keep them safe in all their efforts in what they do. And Lord, tonight, we're so grateful for the hard work of so many volunteers from the Relay for Life Foundation and the Mark Stockwell Vet Foundation and everything that they do for the city. Pray for our city employees for their safety, for their prosperity. Pray for our elected officials and deliberations we have tonight. Pray this in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Alrighty, I'm going to call the meeting to order now. It is right 7 o'clock PM. We have all members of council present. Just as an announcement this evening, there is Resolution Number 3762-19. It is item number 17 on our agenda. That item is being pulled by the city manager and will come back to us at a future date. So anybody here for item 17, Resolution 3762-19, that item is not being heard this evening. Moving along, we have a few different ceremonial items, and the first one that we'd like to start with is an appreciation award for Kathy Moore. So council, why don't you join me down the front? Well, this evening, we have the absolute distinct pleasure of honoring a true public servant. This young lady has been with us as long as I've been up here. So it's been 19, 20 years that Kathy Moore has served our city in all different sorts of capacities, from being on boards to being on charter reviews to serving on this very city council for six months when we had a vacancy. Kathy has always come to the call of the city as a volunteer. So Kathy, why don't you come on up and please be recognized? Kathy has retired from the board. She has other responsibilities, elderly parents to take care of, and give her a big round of applause. I don't like reading these, but I will. This one is a resolution of the City of Oviedo honoring Kathy Moore, and it reads, "Whereas Kathy Moore has served the City of Oviedo in different capacities as a member of the Board of Adjustments, Chairman of the Planning, Zoning and Appeals Board, interim city council member, and Chair of the Local Planning Agency Board." All of that, as I said earlier, folks, since December of 2000. "Whereas she has contributed to the well-being of our citizens by giving tirelessly of her time and energy without desire for recognition, remuneration, or personal gain. And whereas our community is fortunate to have volunteers willing to devote a portion of their lives for the betterment of our community. Whereas the Oviedo City Council wishes to express its appreciation to Kathy Moore on behalf of the staff and citizens of the City of Oviedo for her dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Oviedo, that the mayor and the city council express their heartfelt appreciation to Kathy Moore for her professionalism, dedication, and commitment to the City of Oviedo." We're presenting this today. It has the city seal, and Kathy, we've all signed it. Thank you so much. Give her a big round of applause. Now Kathy, after 20 years of service to our city, a mere paper resolution did not quite seem enough. So the city clerk's office and the city staff and the city council have this for you as well. It says Kathy Moore. It's very heavy. Why don't, Steve, why don't you take the resolution? Very, very heavy. We can show everybody in a moment, but it read, it has the city seal on it. It says Kathy Moore in appreciation of 19 years of service, 2000 to 2019. Why don't we show everybody that one? That one's beautiful. That's really nice. These are trinkets compared to the dedication you've given to the city, and we can't thank you enough. I mean, it's just, there's enough words. So thank you, sweetheart. Why don't we get a picture? Go ahead, you can give her another round of applause. Now Kathy, I noticed that Gary has a damaged wing. Was that, did you do that to him? Because we know how he gets. Or was that a golfing accident? What happened?
It was actually another fall. We've had way too many of those in our family so far this year.
Oh, my goodness. Well, Gary, we wish you a speedy recovery, and now you got Kathy back at the house every evening. So congratulations. Thank you so much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you give that to Kathy? He's got his one wing. We might as well stay down here, guys, because we've got a few presentations. Alrighty, well, the next one is a fun one, and I think Drew, where are you? Because you're going to join us on this one. Each and every year, many of you know, probably about, Brian, was it about 10, 12 years ago that the city adopted Relay for Life?
Yes, sir, about that.
About 10, 12 years ago, the city employees got together with the employee committee, and they had adopted Relay for Life as the employee charity. Each and every year, the employees give their own time, their own money, their own dollars, all different fundraisers throughout the year here at City Hall. Like, if they want to wear jeans on Friday, I think they sell water in the lobby, they do cheesesteaks for life. All of these different items go on that the employees participate in and raise money for Relay for Life. The end of the season, the big fundraiser is the golf tournament that is over at the city-owned now Twin Rivers Golf Course. This year's tournament was packed. It was a sellout, as it always is. We have great sponsors and partners who help us along with it, but I'm going to bring Mr. Boweare up here, let him recognize all the hard work of the city employees who put on the golf tournament and make this happen, and then I think underneath that easel over there covered might be a big fake check. Do you have the real check for them?
I actually got a real check this year.
Alrighty. Alrighty, Drew.
They can't cash that.
They can't cash that.
They'd like to get on the wall.
Thanks, Mayor. As the mayor alluded to, we ran our 10th annual Relay for Life golf outing this year. Before we actually get Mr. Bartlett up, I just want to give you, I have to put my glasses on so I can read my own writing. Basically, I want to thank city council, our city manager, all city employees who, we have multiple city employees throughout the year, pay a dollar to wear jeans on Friday. As mayor said, we do cheesesteak Fridays, we do little other things throughout the year to raise funds, but then the golf tournament is the major thing. We have a huge amount of sponsors, just a huge amount, but first of all and foremost is Republic Services, and Don Collins, I'd like to have you come up. I want to make a little presentation. Republic Services, for the last 10 years, have donated $6,000 annually to the event. So this is just our way. It says, "City of Oviedo and the American Cancer Society would like to recognize our title sponsor, Republic Services, for your continued support of the Relay for Life Golf Outing 2019." Don, once again, thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, guys, they know only you're an incredible job picking up our dollars each and every week. I mean, we don't realize the support that the public forces back into our parks and rec departments each year, and this is just part. Thank you, Don. We appreciate it.
So going into this past year, over the last nine years, we had donated $190,521 to the American Cancer Society. So this time, Tab it, is Tab Bartlett here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I was trying to see where's Tab bring up, and I'm going to let him introduce his folks who are here with him tonight.
Thank you, Drew. So I...
I know Tab wants the check.
No, 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 no. No, actually, this being my eighth year out here in the community and having ties to central Florida and being born and raised not 20 miles from here, this is really just, it's kind of home for me. I love being a part of a community right here where I grew up. I'm so thankful to city council, to the mayor, to Drew, your entire staff, and trust me, this is not about me. And I always like to say, we like to lead with a mission moment, and our mission moment tonight is the fact that our five-state southeast region provided over 91,000 rides to treatment for people. 11,000-plus rides in Orange, Seminole, and Osceola County alone. And for those of us that have the means, that have the support structure to be able to drive yourself to and from chemo, whatever, to your treatment, to your doctor, that's not necessarily a big deal, but if you literally are depending on life-saving treatment and you have no way or no support system to get there, that's huge. So I'm extremely excited about that. We also donated, as a region, over 9,000 nights of lodging, and since the lodging program started, we've actually provided over 41,000 nights of free or reduced lodging in the state of Florida to Floridians. So I'm excited about that. And an organization, as an organization, $410 million last year to research. We are the second only to the federal government in cancer research, $42 million in the southeast alone, and just over $9 million in Florida. And people sometimes will say, well, you know, I want the money to stay local. Hey, I do too, and trust me, we have a team of people that actually allocate the research dollars and the grant money to the doctors and to the scientists that want to do that. And I always say, I don't care if they find the cure in Wisconsin, or New York, or California, or Florida, bottom line is, whatever drug that they do or procedure, it's helping to save lives all over the world and all over the country. So that will be my mission moment, but I do want to say a huge, very special thank you to Jen O'Leary and her entire family. Jen has been doing relay since 1999, long before I ever came around, and she has led our event two successful years in a row. She has helped build it up, and I think after tonight, we actually might be the number one event in central Florida. So that's kudos to Jen. And I also wanted to recognize a couple of students here. We have Cam and Lauren from OHS Beta. Deb Shea was not able to make it. She's actually out of the state right now, but she sent two of her representatives. So we obviously, relay, 10 years, fantastic. It's not going away. We haven't cured cancer yet, but I can tell you, the rate just since I started was 21% survival, reducing the survival rate of cancer patients. It's now at 27. So in the last seven years, we've improved that by 6%. May not sound like a lot, but to about 163,000 people a year that won't die of cancer because of what we're helping to do, that's a big deal. So I wanted to say thanks to them because Oviedo High School Beta Club raised $8,040 this year. So the new generation is picking up, and I can't say thank you enough, but that's all I have to say. Drew, again, enjoy. Every time we get together, we have a great time. I just wish our golf game would improve, and it doesn't. It just doesn't seem to matter, so, but again, I just want to say thank you.
What team won? Did you see the racers again?
Yes, that's what I thought. My Tennessee boys.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Big racers. They always take hits. Why don't you help Drew? I guess we're up to the unveiling, so.
Just a couple of quick things. Yeah, I just want to thank all of our Wreckin' Parks staff, three people especially. Sean Fitzgerald, he couldn't be here tonight, had family stuff. Terry Ash, she's, excuse me, she'd kill me, Terry Martini, she is on vacation, and then Maureen Berninger, my administrative assistant, who does all the paperwork to make us all look good. So I want to thank them. One thing I really want to ask those is, I know at the golf tournament every year, I always ask the question, and I'm always not amazed, I always know what the answer's going to be, but if I can, real quick, how many of you in the audience know somebody, has had someone in your family affected by cancer? If you would raise your hand. Yeah, that's what usually happens. It's pretty much 90% or more of the room. So with these kind of things that we do, I think it's important that we, you know, Tab says the rate's going down, and if we continue this type of thing, I think it will help, and that's my dream. Alright, Tab, come over here, let's do this. I'm going to have Mr. Britton grab this corner, and so, here, you ready?
Yep.
Alright, so this year, on behalf of the city, we were able to raise $30,000. Actually, this is our largest year ever. Last year, we did 28,000, and prior to that, a few years back, we did 27. So with, so with our total, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, for asking, is $220,521. Once again, we have a lot of sponsors. I want to, you know, thank all those sponsors. Don, Republic Services, next year's going to cost you more, but I want to thank everybody. And Tab, like always in council, we appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
And he actually has the real check he's...
Actually, yeah, this is the one you want. I know this one goes in your office, but this is the one you really want.
I can talk to a big wall. Not often I'm speechless, so you guys, you guys did amazing. Absolutely amazing. Wow. Wow. Yes.
Why don't we get a big picture with everybody, the check?
I'm going to ask him to hold it.
Oh, wait, I think Tab's, go ahead, go ahead, Tab.
So a very small trinket, as the mayor alluded to earlier, of appreciation for all that you have done, but this is presented to the city for celebrating 10 years of support and dedication. So I will present this to Drew, who can in turn present it back to the city council and the mayor, so.
We'll put it out, Paul.
Yes. Very good.
It's not necessary, it's all about you.
Well, thank you. Alright, Cam and Lauren, you guys get in here.
Sneak in.
Alright, thank you, guys. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. He always does. Thank you.
Isn't Oviedo something? $220,000 over 10 years from the city employees donating dollars, cheesesteaks, and a few golf tournaments. I mean, that is amazing. Alrighty, the next item on our agenda is actually a donation to the city from the Mark Stockwell Veteran Foundation. So who is here? I guess Terry, are you taking the lead on this?
The laborers.
Alrighty. Art, come on up, and Chief White, why don't you come on up as the keeper of the veterans' tribute?
And I did bring the check.
Art even brought the check.
That's because Donna reminded me.
Thank God for Donna.
I'd like to say just a couple of short words about this. We have, we took over a charity that Mark Stockwell started, and Mark was not even a vet, and he just took it upon himself to do this, and of course, with this untimely passing, we decided that we would take this over. We started with myself and Terry Knox and Gary Muse, and we actually created the charity, and now we have a board, and we've added two people to the board, Lars and Sherry Hastings, and Sherry Stumbo, excuse me.
Why don't all the board members come on? And Mark's daughter, come on.
Come on, everybody, rest here. Come on, man. Come on.
And continuing, I'd like to make a shameless pre here. We would, we would like to put, yeah, why don't you just have the whole team come up?
Yeah, come on up, guys.
We would like to make a little pre to get a little spot on the 10th hole, to put a plaque commemorating Mark, and of course, we will pay for the plaque.
I think that can be arranged, and how about we'll just say done. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Cool.
Drew, make that happen, sir.
Next to where the flag is, usually? By the tree? By the tree? Or on the tee, or by the trees, or across the road. I see the flag every, every week.
Whatever you think the best spot is, I'm game.
You guys can start.
Alright, we'll take...
I see the flag and think of them every week.
Alright. And with that, of course, Terry, you got the check.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the presentation with that. I'll give you the real one eventually. And I want to thank all the team here because you guys made it happen, and we certainly appreciate it. And plus, anybody else has anything else to say?
$13,500.
Yes. he skipped over it, I mean, Mark was a friend of the community, avid golfer, who started a tournament that all the funds raised were used to support the veterans' tribute over to Oviedo on the park. When Mark passed, as Art already described, his friends picked this ball up, created a charity, have kept it going, and that is just an incredible check to go to that tribute. Mark's daughter is right here with me, resident of our city, and we just love her to death. Her little daughter here, look at her, doesn't she cute with her little shirt on? Her husband, I mean, this is, and I can't say it enough, guys, this is Oviedo. This is us. Isn't that, that's a TV show, but this is us. This is what we're about. Don't let anybody tear it apart, because they try every day. Don't listen to them. We are a great community. Guys, thank you so much. Let's get a big picture. Come on, let's get a big group picture. We all have to kind of squeeze in, taller ones in the back, that means I go in the front. Come on in. Greg, come on in. Get in over here, man.
Actually, I should be in front, because I got the blue shirt on.
Guys, well, it's okay. It's Terry, we know. Guys, this is incredible. Thank you for all the work you do. We look forward to next year. Art's paying me off in cash for something. I don't know what this involves, but look at this. We have a check from the Mark Stockwell Vet Memorial Incorporated for $13,500, made out to Friends of Oviedo Veterans Tribute. Guys, thank you so much. This is great.
Mr. Mayor, I can say something?
Compliments and congratulations to Mr. Weaver. After Mark's passing, there was a text that went out that talked about Mark passing, and a group got together, and they said, after Art took the lead, we need to continue the legacy of Mark Stockwell. And here we are today. Thank you, Art.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, guys. Awesome job. All right, looks like we have just about everybody here. We're good upstairs? Barbara, you good?
Yes.
All righty. We'll reconvene the meeting, it's 7:30 PM. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be the approval of our minutes for the June 17, 2019 regular session, and June 24 work session. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
No, sir.
No, sir. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on table is to adopt. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, that is our public comment portion of the meeting. You're free to address the council on any item on the agenda this evening, or even not on the agenda. I do have one written request, I don't know if that person still wants to address us since the item was pulled. Is Adam Balls here?
Nope.
Adam? No? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address city council? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda is items number six through 14. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any questions on the consent agenda this evening?
No, sir, looks good.
Second? Looks good. Councilman Chudnow?
I'm good.
Councilman Britton? All righty. I'll just point out a couple of things on there. We have the architectural design order for Ford's Garage over at Oviedo on the Park, and that is not a car repair place. That is a restaurant. The boards are right over there, you can kind of take a look and see what they're planning on. So it's, like we said earlier during our CRA meeting, Oviedo on the Park is really becoming what we all envisioned it to be. Any other comments? Hearing none, call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Give me just a moment here, folks, let me catch up, get up to item number 15. That is our only public hearing tonight. It is ordinance number 1684, it's an amendment to the city's official zoning map for the Jehovah Witnesses congregation. Mr. Groot, can you read back by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida amending the official zoning map of the city of Oviedo, Florida to change the zoning district of approximately 1.99 acres located east of State Road 426 and south of Mitchell Hammock Road from county commercial C3 to city commercial C2, providing for legislative intent, implementing actions, a savings provision, non-codification, correction of scripter's errors, conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by power.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. The applicant was here and had to leave, but this is a pretty simple item. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Applicant said goodbye to me just a few minutes ago, I apologize.
I'm the backup. My name's Karen Drew.
I just need your name and address for the record?
Karen Drew, and it's 1901 West State Road Force 26.
Okay, great. And I do apologize.
It's okay. I'm open for any questions, or...
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? I think we're pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on...
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This property was annexed into the city back in 2003. We went ahead at the time, we did a comprehensive plan amendment to incorporate the property into the comprehensive plan, we assigned it a commercial future land use designation. However, the property owners weren't ready to move forward with the zoning at that time. When we do a zoning, basically, three things. We want to make sure that this proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. We want to make sure that the proposed zoning is consistent with the, compatible with the zoning districts in the surrounding area, and then is the list of uses compatible with the surrounding area. In this case, the answer is yes on all three. The proposed C2 zoning district is consistent with the commercial future land use designation and compatible with the surrounding area. The local planning agency conducted a public hearing on June 4, 2019, and recommended approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. This is the second reading and public hearing for this ordinance. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1684.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address city council on ordinance number As Mr. Cobb mentioned, just for clarity, this property had an old Seminole County zoning designation, and the city is giving it its exact zoning designation, so nothing's really Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor Pollak?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1684.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, anything to add?
No.
Councilman Henkin?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Chudnow?
Good.
All righty, as I said earlier, this is a pretty simple, basic, little item. So with that being said, all in favor of the motion to adopt ordinance 1684, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. You're welcome, of course. Moving along, we're going to go on to item number 16, that is ordinance number 1685. It is the establishment of the city's public arts logo. Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida amending section 2-12 of the Code of Ordinances, providing for the establishment of a city of Oviedo public arts logo as one of the city's logos, providing for legislative findings, providing for sole use in official business, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for scripter's errors, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by power, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot, do appreciate it. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Yes, Mayor. The purpose of this ordinance is to incorporate the public arts board logo, which you approved at your last council meeting, into the Code of Ordinances, section 212, 2-12 through 2-14. What this will do, it will provide for the protection of the logo, just as it protects the other city logos that we have. Tonight, we're asking that you conduct first reading and schedule a public hearing for August 5, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 5, 2019, for ordinance number 1685, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So move. Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Good.
Councilman?
Good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
All righty, so the motion on table is scheduled a public hearing for August 5, 2019, on ordinance number 1685, here at Oviedo City Hall. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along. We're up to item number 18. There we go. Item number 18 is resolution number 3763-19. It is a non-statutory development agreement with an associated master land use plan for the Citizens Bank of Florida. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property consists of about 7.75 acres, includes the banquet drive-through, and there's also an exterior building that is used for commercial uses. The property is located on the north side of East Broadway Street, Canal Road 419, and the west side of Oviedo Boulevard, as well as the southeast side of Geneva Drive. The property is designated downtown mixed-use and future land use designation in Old Downtown Mixed Use Subarea. It also carries the mixed-use historic downtown district perimeter zoning district on the official zoning map. Now, the proposed development includes a mix of residential and non-residential development as required in the Old Downtown Subarea. The proposal is to allow from 56, a minimum of 56 to 112 residential units, and 23,632 to 70,894 square feet of commercial development. One of the things that we were talking in our earlier meeting with the CRA was the need for comprehensive plan amendments, downtown master plan update, comprehensive plan amendments, and land development code revisions. That's one of the things that has impacted this development, in that our comprehensive plan has very strict minimum and maximum mixture of uses that it requires. And so that's one of the reasons why that this master land use plan provides for a mix, a minimum and maximum of dwelling units, and a minimum and a maximum of commercial uses. It's not exactly what you would call a market-driven type of agreement, but it provides for what the comprehensive plan requires. The uses that will be provided for in the master plan are the uses that are allowed in the downtown, the historic district perimeter zoning district. The minimum open space is 10%. Minimum building setbacks will be zero along East Broadway Street with a maximum setback, front setback of 10 feet. The maximum building height will be 45 feet for the residential, 60 feet for townhomes, and then 60 feet for multifamily and commercial development. There are also some urban design features that are incorporated into the plan, such as overhangs over sidewalks. The off-street parking is consistent with the comprehensive plan, except that the number of spaces required for the existing banquet drive-through shall be three per thousand gross floor area, and some areas of the site will allow multiple rows of parking in front of the buildings. We try to limit the number of rows of parking in front of buildings in the downtown area. And then the minimum parking space will be nine feet by 18 feet. Our standard space is 10 by 20, but we do allow nine by 18 in certain areas, so this one will allow nine by 18 throughout the project. Buffers are also required, buffers are provided when buffers are required. There is also the addition of the Skyclimber Oak Tree into the permissible landscaping. The staff recommends approval of the proposed non-statutory development agreement and master land use plan. The local planning agency considered the resolution at its June 18, 2019 meeting, and thereat recommended approval, with one recommended change to the documents regarding the removal of a standard that allows balconies to overhang sidewalks in the right-of-way. The applicant removed this from the documents, so that's already been taken care of. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3763-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, and I see the applicant as president. Are you ready with your presentation?
Yes.
Good evening, you know the drill, name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Harland Hanson, 1047 Sweetbrier Road, Orlando, Florida. Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to speed this up, since you had such an excellent presentation by Mr. Cobb earlier, and by Javier. Basically, one of the things we discovered when we started working on this is that the comprehensive plan and the land development code doesn't really allow you to do the things that your comprehensive plan and your original downtown master plan called for. So if we could go forward, and I'm going to skip through some things, there's a few things I want to mention first. We were looking at the entire downtown, and as Brian said, the Citizens Bank, 7.75 acres, sits at the northwest corner of Oviedo Boulevard and Broadway.
Could you just point that? Yeah, see, you have the pointer. There you go.
That property there, all the way up to and including that pond, which would be an extension of the city's pond. One of the, next slide, please. Some of these things I'm going to skip over, but the historic downtown core was basically identified as an 800-foot circle centered on Central, and then the properties fronting on Broadway. And it pointed out the importance of creating a downtown with buildings fronting on the street, but when the historic district perimeter zoning was created, that stopped that. It called for a 20-foot buffer along the streets, 25% open space, so you really went to suburban standards immediately. Next slide. And the intent of the district is to preserve the small-town character and create a, let's roll on through these. Some of the things that helped make redevelopment possible, you all have been doing, working on for a number of years, and the next several years are going to really be exciting. You're working on and spending money on the road improvements, sidewalk improvements, like the new streetscaping that's going on, and landscaping improvements, next slide. But one of the things we discovered, and again implying the growth management... But one of the things we discovered, and again implying the growth management or the comprehensive plan criteria in the land development code, due to the small parcel size in the downtown and the land development code regulations, it was very difficult to make the downtown kind of feeling we wanted to create. Next slide. In looking at cities like Winter Park, Winter Garden, Kissimmee, those towns have zero setbacks for the buildings. They have wide sidewalks. They have no open space requirement in the downtown. And so we, that's, we think, what we were trying, and what you're trying to emulate, and it sounded very much like those are the kinds of things that Javier and Brian were talking about earlier. Next slide. So one of the things that we want to do is focus on creating market dynamic possibilities in the downtown. Next slide. You've been working for a number of years now on the Geneva Drive, and Phase 1 of that called for 434 and a portion of Broadway to be improved, basically from Station Street over to Central. Next slide. And I appeared before you, I think, five years ago, asking if you would consider retaining a landscape architect to work with Inwood Engineering to do a streetscape on Broadway. This is an illustration of what they've come up with. Center, this, that's, that intersection is Central and Broadway, and it's going west, and then it goes east to Station Street. But that kind of a look is planned now all the way through the historic downtown, so it'll be nice wide sidewalks with beautiful landscaping. Next slide. And then we talked earlier in the meeting about Geneva Drive realignment, which has been an objective for the city for a long time. You couldn't acquire the right-of-way. Citizens Bank did acquire that right-of-way and then sold a portion of it to Nelson and Company, and we're now, next slide, we're now working with the city to come up with the design for that. Excuse me. Bill Tipton, Nelson and Company retained Tipton and Associates to design that. Once it's approved by the city, it'll be turned over to Inwood Engineering to become the engineers of record. You have worked on the funding for that. That was important to the state, and because of you doing that, the state has agreed to add this road to the plans update phase, and we'll get Geneva Drive realignment and that new intersection.
Harland, if I can just ask you, the dark red line?
Yes.
Heading over, that is another?
Going to the east, my, oh, on the top?
Yeah, on the top.
Right. That's an idea.
Right. Yeah, that's another, something envisioned, if I remember.
Right. That's a vision, too, and you see there's also a green line on there, and the idea, one of the things we've been working on, and you'll see in our plans, excuse me, we're trying to create additional east-west circulation that doesn't have to get on Broadway as we do these developments. But I wanted to point out one other thing, and that is that the median on Broadway going east from Geneva Drive eliminates the left-hand turn into Citizens Bank when this happens, which will be good, we think, for the bank and very good for traffic flow. Next slide. Another important item is the master stormwater plan. It was pointed out by Brian earlier that where the new pond is was not really conceived of in the early 2000s, and now it is a plan. And everything that you see in yellow there is going into that pond, but that Citizens Bank and Evans Grove's property, south of Broadway, are not included in the big pond, so we, when the Citizens Bank pond is relocated, it needs to be designed to accommodate these other properties. Next slide.
And then that pond's going to tie into the big pond.
Excuse me?
I said that pond is?
The concept is?
Being conceptually is going to tie into the large pond.
Correct. It's being, Citizens Bank has retained VHB, who are the engineers for your pond, to design a connected pond.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the next slide.
Yeah. To design a connected pond. An important consideration in both of that is there's a 48-inch stormwater line that's going up Oviedo Boulevard and going all the way up to the roundabout and crossing under the roundabout and then into the big pond. We're proposing consideration of cutting that off and sending it into the Citizens Pond and then connecting directly to the large pond with a potential savings of over $100,000 for the state, which hopefully can get passed on to the project. Next slide. This is a, Chris Height was here earlier. This is a park design that she's done for the area around your pond. Next slide. And now this is our very graphic master land use plan that we've submitted. This is a drawing of the site. It shows the five access points that exist for the site, and then lists all of the things that Brian referred to earlier about changes to the land development code that we're proposing, like zero setbacks, 10% open space, parking changes. Excuse me. One important consideration in this development agreement and master land use plan is the creation of an equivalency matrix, which is shown there, which basically relates the amount of trips for a multifamily unit to a commercial unit and allows exchange of those in a way that doesn't require us to know exactly what the land use is today, but it can change in the future. I apologize for my throat. Next slide. These are two illustrations that we've done to show when we apply all of our standards, what the development might look like. The illustrative plan on the right, if you would, Mike, point out the buildings along Broadway on the front side, letting them front right on the street. Those could have a maximum setback of 10 feet. Oh, thank you so much. Those could have a maximum setback of 10 feet, and then that only applies to the setbacks on Broadway. And buildings can go zero to the other streets, but they also don't have to be limited on their setback from Oviedo Boulevard or Geneva. One important consideration, let's go, look at the plan on the left, Mike. That's a plan that does not have residential, and if you do change the comprehensive plan, this is something that might happen. That allows up to 118,000 square feet of business, office, retail, restaurants, et cetera. But in the area along Oviedo Boulevard, if there is parking against Oviedo Boulevard, there would be a 10-foot landscape buffer with a hedge and trees in it to buffer the street. And another important consideration, next slide. These are some images of what we are trying to create. And with the streetscape that's going on, that you have in the plans at the present time, that kind of streetscape is going to be occurring, and that's a three-story building, and for example, that's what might occur at the corner of Oviedo Boulevard and Broadway. Next slide. We want to create a place with wide sidewalks. Next slide. Places with street furniture and active streets. You notice the signs and the awnings over the sidewalk, that's a condition that we have. And what we're doing in that connection is to avoid liability for the city if it's over a public right-of-way. The property owner will provide, name the city as an additional insurer, so you don't have a liability issue. Next slide. These are two, from a historic standpoint, these are two original crate labels that Nelson and Company used when they were shipping fruit from their property. Doing things like that in the historic downtown would be neat. Next slide. And creating outdoor gathering places, so there's a lot of, you know, Javier made the comment about creating sense of place and creating destination for all of those cars that are going through the historic downtown. These are the kinds of things that'll make that happen. Next slide. So in summary, that's the kind of vision that we think that these development changes that we have proposed would allow. And with that, I'll close my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and let you know that we agreed with the staff recommendation, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Harland. Are there any questions from council?
Thank you for the water.
Any questions?
I got nothing.
Harland, there was one, at one point, and this is an important point to bring up, I think with the zoning changes, you get to do office retail as opposed to a residential component. Is that true?
Is, as?
Instead of a residential component? Is that what I?
Yes, if the growth management, if the comprehensive plan is changed, then really what happens is residential can still happen, but it's entitled, not required.
Right. The way the plan is written currently, because it's a suburban plan, you're required to put?
And your comprehensive plan requires it, and we didn't want to be inconsistent with your comprehensive plan, so that's why we have the minimum 56 units and the maximum of 112. In the event, we have in the development agreement, in the event that you do modify the comprehensive plan, then that's something that can be revisited and potentially the residential will be removed. The difficulty is, in today's marketplace, you need the larger number in order to make it manageable.
Right.
And so it's, it makes developing the site difficult. So that's something. But once you're creating this envelope of opportunities, then you can respond to the marketplace. We had an interesting condition when we applied for school capacity. As you know, Lawton Elementary is overcrowded, and it's being expanded, but we received a letter from, two letters from the school board, one saying that we were in non-compliance, and another saying we were in compliance. And the one, the way that we got into compliance was by the children that were living here having to be bused to other schools, which is, doesn't create neighborhood. And so those are some of the kinds of conflicts that need to be dealt with.
Right. And that's controlled by a separate agency.
Yes.
Alrighty. Any other questions? Because I have a couple if nobody does.
Go ahead.
Everyone good?
Mm-hmm.
Harland, you heard earlier, the CRA board approved the vision with Javier, and I know that's something that, as a planner, excites you, and excites Brian and everybody else. As those students and teachers start to sit with the stakeholders and the community and start over the next four or five months, whatever it is that they're going to need to bring something back, I mean, obviously, what's nice about what you're proposing this evening is that this is really just, this is 100,000-foot right now still. And, right? I mean, this is something that's going to get tweaked and moved as different ideas and different visions come into play. I'm assuming. I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page and I'm understanding it.
And we look forward to working closely with the students and with Chris and Javier as that goes forward. The way I like to describe good, long-range planning is that you're creating an envelope of opportunities?
Right.
With strong design guidelines and development standards that create the images that we're talking about. And then when the developer comes in with the real project, that's when you get into specifically how wide the sidewalk is. But we're calling for 12-foot wide sidewalks and bikeways and all of those kinds of things. So those criteria are in there, but we aren't specifying that you have to do this. You have to meet the standards, but the use can be market-responsive.
So it's very similar, because you were involved 15, 16 years ago with Oviedo on the park?
Correct.
Where we created the vision, we created the setbacks, and then as it got tweaked, it's actually built less dense than what was originally planned.
Correct. But the, but the, but the long-term future is there for it to expand, just like you were talking about potentially needing parking decks and things of that nature. And that's, that's when long-range planning is really well-done, when you create those opportunities and allow, allow things to evolve. And there's no, probably no market today for the Citizens Bank property for that full 118,000 square feet of mixed-use space. But who knows whether that's true or not until somebody actually gets started with it. So they might do some of it and delay some of it for later. But the evolution of it can happen according to the design guidelines and development standards.
And then it's all, from any development standpoint, it's all hinged on getting the road done first.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, the road has to be the four lanes first, the capacity has to be there, the flow has to be evened out, I would assume, before, you know, something like this even such to make its way through City Hall.
Well, and you can tell by looking at me that I've been doing this stuff a long time. Private money follows public spending, and the creation of the kinds of things and the these beautiful historic downtown that's going to occur here over the next five to 10 years even, it's just going to be amazing. You all, and I applaud you all for the steps you've taken in the past. Also, I'm remiss if I don't compliment Teresa and Jay and Anosh and Brian and Bobby and Gloria and your staff for working with us. They're tough, but they're really great to work with.
We've never heard that before.
You've never heard that before. But they also, they're also great to work with, and we've had a?
They're also very fair.
Yes, they are.
They just extrapolate. But alrighty, that's all I had for Harland. Does anybody have anything to add?
Good.
No? Yes?
So if we, if we connect this to the CRA meeting, I think Brian mentioned we want to transition this plan, which is suburban, into a more of an urban plan?
Yes.
I think, I think that's, you can call it what you want, but it's a necessary evil. And I just did some calculations here. We're growing at about 700 residents a year, year in, year out. Five, over 5,000 since 2010 have moved here.
Wow.
And they're going to keep coming, and we're going to have to have a place for them. So I know people don't like to see apartments or residence, but they're coming every year, and we've got to find a place for them. So I think this would be a good idea to start making that transition to an urban center.
Councilman Chudnow?
Yeah, the one thing that I noticed on this is when we're talking about the stormwater main coming up and going around the roundabout, if there's some way we can circumvent that, because you could start tearing that roundabout up, if there's enough issues on that roundabout now, you start tearing that up, that's going to create even more hassle. That's just something to consider.
Maybe they could take the 100,000 and make it even wider at the roundabout. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
I just think this project's wonderful, and I think it's a, it's just a piece of what the historic downtown's going to become. We've seen a lot of different renderings of it, on the rest of it, and this is amazing, and the work that was put in to acquire the Geneva Extension or the realignment. I applaud you guys, and thank you so much for all the hard work you've put into this and making this the project that's going to really, really make the historic downtown area look wonderful.
On behalf of citizens, I thank you for that, and Nelson and Company.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You know, I just wanted to point out something that people might not have caught, and the mayor brought up a very, very good point, you know? I mean, and I, you would just hit it head-on. You know, it's election season, we hear all this craziness on social media, you know, you've got to build the infrastructure before you build the housing. And you said something that's very important. I was thinking the same thing. You know, people talk about the traffic around the city and how dense it is and how, you know, it's tough to get around. It's really not that bad. You know, rush hour is rush hour, wherever you are. But the point is, is outside your project, when that's all done, Phase 1 is done, we come from the high school, we come down to Oviedo Boulevard, and then we take it from Oviedo Boulevard down to just a little bit west of Lockwood. Assuming nobody builds anything massive in Orange or Seminole County, it's all going to work. So it just kind of aggravates me a lot when I hear three or four people constantly bashing the city for not having planning. Now, where we have the ability to do something, you know, the state has stripped the city and counties of a lot of their power, but we know, and he's to be commended for just saying that, we need that road in before that's done, because I think when people come out east and they head straight down the new road, 426, 419, all the way to 417, all the way to 417, other people come and use Mitchell Hammock, everything, everything works perfectly. There's a plan for all of this. And I also agree with Deputy Mayor, you know, you have some of the founding families of this city behind this project that have been here for generations that want to see it succeed too. So, you know, sometimes people, you know, they make too much out of, out of nothing, and we have a plan. I always say, if we haven't fixed it yet, there's a plan to fix it. So, you know, that was a good point, Mr. Mayor. But Holland, it's a great project, look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things in connection with that, you know, and in this historic downtown, it isn't just the city. You've had to coordinate with the city and the county and DOT, and the water management district and-
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of stakeholders.
Yeah, a lot of coordination. It doesn't, it doesn't just happen overnight.
St. John's, you know, ourselves, it just goes on and on. Property owners.
Division of state land with the bike trail.
Mm-hmm. That's right. And you're still working on that? You've been working on that for ten years.
I've been involved with Oviedo now since about nineteen eighty, and it's been wonderful.
You're still working on that trail swap, aren't you?
Yeah, exactly.
No. Holland, I don't know if there's any other questions, let me just make sure. No, we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, we'll call you back up. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add from the staff side?
Uh, no, sir.
Alrighty, then, what is the pleasure of council on resolution number thirty-seven sixty-three dash nineteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I think Councilman Henkin beat you to it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-seven sixty-three dash nineteen.
You can have a second. There you go. Councilman Henkin, anything else?
Great project, go for it. Good.
Deputy Mayor?
Great project. Thank you so much for bringing this to the city.
Councilman Chud now.
I'm good.
Alrighty. Councilman Britton?
Good.
Alrighty. Well, I think we've hashed this one all out. Holland, thank you again for all your hard work, and one day you'll come up here and you'll tell us you've got that trail swap done, but best of luck with that one, because that's, what? The railroad, the state, the, who knows how many people you have involved in that one. But nevertheless, the motion on table is to adopt resolution thirty-seven sixty-three dash nineteen. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving along, we're up to item number nineteen, uh, which is resolution number thirty-seven sixty-seven dash nineteen, establishing the tentative fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty millage rates, and scheduling the first budget public hearing. Mr. Cobb, can you help us out with this?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to establish the tentative FY two thousand nineteen, twenty millage rates and schedule the first public hearing for the FY twenty, two thousand nineteen, twenty proposed budget for the purposes of public notification under the Florida TRIM millage statutes. The acronym for that is TRIM, T-R-I-M. And under the TRIM statutes, all property owners must be notified of the tentative millage levies by mailing from the Seminole County Property Appraiser in August. City council may subsequently reduce the tentative millage. City council cannot increase the tentative millage rate without another public notification to all property owners. Now, for practical purposes, the proposed resolution establishes the maximum property tax millage rate for the next fiscal year. The FY nineteen, two twenty proposed budget is balanced using the recommended millage rate of five point one one four five mils, or five dollars and eleven point four five cents per thousand of assessed valuation. The debt service for the two thousand and three general obligation bond issue will be set at zero point one six seven five mils, or sixteen point seven five cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Utilizing the recommended millage rate as summary of the combined millage rates for the proposed FY nineteen twenty millage, uh, nineteen twenty fiscal year is, is follows. It's a general fund five point one four, one one four five, general obligation bond rate of zero point one six seven five, for a total millage rate of five point two eight two zero. And I'd like to note that this is the same total millage rate as the current fiscal year. The millage rate of five point one one four five mils will resort, result in fourteen million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars in general fund revenue, less five hundred and five thousand, one hundred dollars contributed to the CRA for a total revenue to the general fund of fourteen million, two hundred and forty-two thou, oh, I'm sorry, fourteen billion, two hundred and forty-two thou, yeah, fourteen million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. I wish it was billion. Budgeting at the ninety-five percent level as allowed by Florida statutes, the general fund budget will increase by one million, fifty-six dollars and nine, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, as compared to the FY eighteen nineteen general fund budget. Setting the millage rate for the general fund at five point one one four five mils will result in a citywide tax increase of five point one zero percent above the rollback millage rate of four point eight six six three mils. The maximum millage rate is five point nine eight one one mils, and reflects the maximum tentative millage that the council can enact per the TRIM statute. And if approved, the ten, this tentative millage rate can be reduced at one of your budget public hearings. Resolution number thirty-seven sixty-seven dash nineteen establishes the tentative millage rate of five point one one four five mils and a separate tentative millage rate for the general obligation debt of zero point one six seven five mils for a total millage rate of five point two eight two zero, and schedules the public hearing, first public hearing date for the consideration of the budget for Thursday, September the fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM in the city council chambers. The action required by city council tonight does not involve the adoption of your budget. This is only setting your tentative millage rate as required by Florida statutes. The adoption of the budget will occur during your two public hearings, which are now scheduled for September fifth and September sixteenth of this year. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution thirty-seven sixty-seven dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Groot, can you read the resolution by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution adopting the tentative millage rates to be levied for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty by the city of Oviedo, Oviedo city government. Adopting millage rates for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year for the city of Oviedo at the overall combined rate of five point two eight two oh mils, with five point one one four five mils for the city's operations, and zero point one six seven five mils for the payment of the two thousand and three general obligation bond issued voted debt service. Expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the tentative millage rates to be September five, twenty nineteen, and the first public hearing on the proposed budget on the same date at six thirty PM, and providing for scrutiny errors, implementing administrative actions of savings provision, confidence, stability, and an effective date. That's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution thirty-seven sixty-seven dash nineteen, adopting a tentative ad valorem millage rate of five point one one four five mils for fiscal year twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, adopting a tentative general obligation bond millage rate of zero point one six seven five mils for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, adopting a tentative total millage rate of five point two eight two zero mils, which results in a citywide revenue increase of five point one oh percent above the rollback rate of four point eight six six three mils, and scheduling the first public hearing for September fifth, two thousand nineteen, six thirty PM, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council chambers, four hundred Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, three two seven six five.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
No discussion. It's, uh, it's, it's the same millage rate that we've had year after year after year.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Henkin?
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Um, yeah, I do want to just say again, um, it is election season, and I'm going to hit these head-on from the dais like I always do. Uh, you know, don't believe everything you read on social media. I saw one last night, and I reached out to the poster where she is telling everybody that the city is raising taxes, just like she did two years ago, that we were having a twenty percent tax increase, which we did not. Deputy Mayor just said it, our tax rate is staying the same. Don't get confused with the rollback rate. The rollback rate means the amount of taxes you had in the previous year, if you were to keep that. Our values went up about nine percent, so yes, your taxes could go up because the value of your home went up. But for the city to raise the taxes, that five point two eight would have to be higher, and it's not. And we've adjust, adjusted some of our, uh, GOB debt down to keep everything at five twenty-eight. So to that poster, and I called her today and told her I was not happy about it, come there and say it so we can address it, and have some, some professional people talk about it, but we're not raising your taxes. Your house went up, yes, it's going to go up, but we've kept this rate for the longest time, and when, I mean, even when I first got here, we held it for seven, eight years. Um, I think the only time we've ever raised it in my time here, and I always said from the day I got elected, the only way I'd ever entertain it was for the police and fire. And we were losing a lot of them, and we did a few tweaks years ago, but we're not raising your taxes. So I'm just going to take that head-on. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Councilman Britton, do you have anything?
Same, uh, same thing that the unwritten agreement we've had with staff is that as GOB goes down, we'll allow the millage rate to go up to maintain, uh, what it was traditionally was five point three. It's actually less than that now. Uh, and we, we dug a hole during the recession to support the, the residents, and now we were coming out of it, and we're in a little bit better times, so, uh, keeping with the agreements we got with staff so they have a stable budget, this is, uh, this is what it should be.
You know, that's a great point. Can I just add on to that? When, when, when we all came here, you've been here a long time, when I came here, the millage rate was five point three three five. It's now five point two eight. So in fourteen years, it went down. So believe everything you hear.
Anything else, Councilman?
I'd, I'd also just like to point out, and this is a, kudos to the staff, I mean, most folks, and, and again, yes, stuff gets misconstrued, and, uh, for the benefit of We have less employees today than we had when I started here. We have more amenities, we have more offerings, we have larger police force, larger fire department, but overall total, we still have less employees. I mean, if that isn't a staff doing an absolutely exceptional job with the tax dollars and the council watching all the tax dollars, I, I don't know what is an example of that. That's what you're not going to hear. You know, you're going, you're going to hear all the noise. Don't pay attention to the noise. You hear the noise, call one of us up, ask us a question, call the city staff up, ask them a question, if you don't want to ask of us. The overall budget this year, I think, is thirty million? Is that about what we're looking at, Brian?
It's about thirty-one million.
Thirty-one million. Uh, you know, thirty-one million dollar budget, total budget probably be about eighty million or so, I'm assuming with enterprise funds? Seventy-seven something it was, I think, Jerry?
Roughly.
Yeah, roughly. Well, let's just say eighty million for argument's sake. You know, that's with water, sewer, wastewater, uh, yeah, that's the whole kit and caboodle. I mean, if these guys haven't done an incredible job, I don't know who has done as good of a job. I mean, to keep everything that we have here in the city. And, and it's a shame, because I, I honestly think sometimes that some take it for granted. They just think this happens everywhere. This doesn't happen everywhere. I, I travel central Florida all the time, showing homes in all different communities. There's nothing like Oviedo, guys. But, anyway, great job, Brian, as always, keeping that millage rate exactly the same, balancing the budget. Jerry, I know you've been socking away tons of money in the reserves for emergencies, you know, kudos to you and your staff. Hurricane hits us, I don't think we're going to have too many problems. You never know. Well, if we get flattened, I mean, that's a different story, but, uh, let's hope that doesn't happen.
Let's not talk about that.
Yeah, let's, let's not. Alrighty, we have motion on table to adopt resolution thirty-seven sixty-seven dash nineteen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to schedule the public hearing for September fifth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM here at City Hall? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, let me move along here and get up to our first discussion item. And, uh, earlier, you saw us recognize Kathy Moore for her nineteen years of service to our city, uh, but now we have an opening on the board in which she served. So, the council will make an appointment this evening to that board. I just want to say that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven applicants for one position, and we do greatly appreciate all the interest that everybody has shown in serving in the city. Unfortunately, only one will be able to be chosen this evening, but, uh, the board does rotate every now and again, so for those maybe who aren't chosen this evening, please keep your applications in with the clerk, and, uh, that way, when openings do occur on our boards, the clerk can contact you. So I'm going to open this up for nominations, and we'll do it as we usually do, and then I'll go down for motions, and we'll see where we land.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Would you like to nominate Art Weaver?
I have nomination for Art Weaver. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amy Kirkland.
Any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the nominations. We take the nominations in order, uh, that they were called. All in favor of Art Weaver, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Amy Kirkland?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Weaver, you are appointed to the LPA. Be careful what you wish for. Congratulations. Alrighty. Moving along, we are up to the city manager's report. Mr. Cobb?
I have no report, Mayor.
Mr. Cobb, after a very long meeting, because we did start at five-thirty, that is much appreciated, and, uh, Mr. Groot, how about you?
No report, Mr. Groot.
I'm going to follow everyone's lead. No report. Deputy Mayor Pollak, will you keep it going, or am I going to have to throw that tablet away?
No report.
There you go. That's what we like to hear. And I know Councilmember Henkin next to me may or may not have something.
No, I got, I'm good.
Alrighty. Councilman Chud now. Go ahead, Boys and Girls.
Chief?
Go ahead. Boys and Girls Club, go ahead.
I just want to make, uh, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, we're ready to gut and roof the building, uh, we're moving along, uh, and bringing the Boys and Girls Club to the city of Oviedo.
Nice.
Uh, Chief, that is, uh, well, as chief, you started. As a council member, you've continued. You serve on their board, um, you know, the fundraising efforts, the, all of the work by all of those in the police department, the planning department, and everybody to make that a reality in our city. I mean, what a game-changers that, that's going to be for disadvantaged children who live in the community. I mean, they're looking at, you're looking at serving sixty to seventy kids, is it?
That's correct.
In the building that you're renovating.
That's, yes.
Right. I mean, that, think of the difference that that'll make in those kids' lives. I mean, it's, it's, it's acceptable. That's a, a partnership with Antioch Church.
That's correct. It's, uh, and not only did Antioch donate the building, but they've made some financial commitment toward the process also, so it's, it's a great partnership along with the city, uh, with, uh, some private individuals. Hopefully, we'll be up and running, uh, during the school year.
Did I, did I, I'm sorry, Chief, uh, did I hear something, Chief, about starting a, a program at the church?
Uh, we're working on that.
Okay, so it's not in stone yet?
It's not in stone yet, but it's kind of like in limestone, maybe, but, uh, we're moving in that direction.
Councilman Britton, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, maybe we should recognize Pastor Jones at some point in the future for, for their contribution.
You know, that is an excellent point. Mr. Cobb, can we work on that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Chud now, anything else?
Uh, if we just add that for stone to that also. Mr. Cobb?
Uh, how about we'll do this? Councilman Chud, now, why don't you get together with the city managers, with the consensus of the council, and whoever you feel is, uh, needs to be recognized, please, make sure that we don't miss anybody. Alrighty, uh, anything else?
Nope.
Yep. Councilman Britton, you're up.
Just one item. I'm going to be attending the Transportation Committee at League of Cities on Friday.
I'm going to be attending the Transportation Committee at League of Cities on Friday.
Good for you.
Uh, and then, uh, we'll be at the conference, we'll have our third meeting at the conference in mid-August.
Yeah, I think it's like the fourteenth this year, or something like that, right? Wednesday the fourteenth it starts?
Yeah, oh, and I will, uh, I, I need to disclose, I will not be here on August fourth is the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll be out of town.
And I'll be out of town as well.
Really?
Yes.
Awesome. I love meetings with three of us, they go very quickly. These two talk so much. Uh, Mr. Cobb, since we're going to have both out on August fourth, I think maybe, uh, keep it as light as we can.
Oh, we have six public hearings.
All righty, that's great.
Good.
If they're first readings, it's all good. Uh, all right, so the other three of us will make sure that we are here.